Good morning, everybody. Welcome to our candidate forum for Ward Number One. I'm John Borowski. I am the chair of the Local Government Affairs Committee and this year also chair of the Chamber Board. Welcome you and welcome our candidates for getting up this morning and coming in to see us. We have some questions that we've given to the candidates that they'll be able to answer. But there may be also be an opportunity if you guys have questions to ask. There are some cards and pens in the back. So if you wanted to ask a question, fill out a card and give it to either myself or Tiffany. And we'll go through it and we'll try and get as many of those answered as we can. And then I'm going to turn it over to Tiffany and let her take it from here.
Hey, thank you. And just real quick on the three by five cards, feel free to move about to cabin. If you need to get up and want a snack or anything else like that. So good morning and welcome to the Eugene Chamber of Commerce's Ward One Candidate Forum. Tiffany, I'd like to Tiffany Edwards and I'm the Vice President of Policy and Community Development for the Eugene Chamber. This morning, we are welcoming candidates running for Eugene City Council in Ward One. The seat is currently held by Emily Simple and who's not seeking reelection. So I'll start by this morning for thanking each of you for participating in our forum this morning. We're looking forward to hearing more from you and your thoughts and ideas of the future for Eugene. Today's forum features both an in-person and a virtual audience. Now, we, they can't see us, but, or they can see us, but we can't see them. So they're here on the screen. We're going to be using the owl and so they'll be able to chime in and participate and they'll, they can ask questions. So folks on Zoom, if you have a question, we're having the audience do three by five cards to submit. Please put it in the chat and I can see that. So right now I see Larissa, but I'll see if there's anybody else that jumps on. So our format for today, we're going to start with each of the candidates have two minutes to introduce themselves. Then I'll be asking a series of questions which all of the candidates were provided in advance. And they will each have one minute to answer those and we're going to rotate who starts, if that's okay. And then after the prepared questions, we'll move on to questions from you all in the audience and you all on Zoom. Like I said, we've got the three by five cards and we'll hand those out and so if you want to fill those out, just bring them off or just hand them forward. And I would, if you, for whatever reason, we run out of time, I definitely encourage you to connect with the candidates regularly outside of today. And they'll all be able to provide you good contact info and stuff like that. We will wrap up in time to allow each of you to have two minutes for your closing statements. Heather in the back is going to be keeping time and she's going to be holding up a red card when you have 15 seconds left. And that little green timer when time's up and if you could just, you know, wrap up your sentence, we won't catch you off right. So before we start, are there any questions? Okay, Eliza, we're going to start with you and the question is, well, it's not really a question, but if you want to do it, so your opening statement or the, the question number one was tell us about yourself and why you're running to represent, but I don't want to be duplicative, so.
Good morning. My name is Eliza Kacinski. I am running for Ward One Eugene City Council, as you probably figured out because I'm sitting up here at this table. I am running in large part because I love Eugene. I love the choices that I get from living in Eugene and particularly in Ward One. I have the choice to walk to the store as opposed to having to drive everywhere I go. I have a choice about what type of housing I can live in. Many people in Eugene don't have those same choices. And so I really want to help ensure that folks in Eugene can take advantage of all of the things that Eugene has to offer. I got involved with Eugene politics type things with housing. I started about nine, eight years ago now, really looking at the fact that we were building up to a housing shortage. We had put a lot of barriers in place that made it very hard to create housing in Eugene and started working to help remove those barriers. I did a lot of focus on particularly smaller housing units, so like accessory dwelling units, middle housing, and really working to help make sure that Eugene did the things that Eugene needed to do to make those viable options for people in our community. From there, I ended up on the Eugene Budget Committee. I've been on the Budget Committee for the past seven years, which has really given me, I think, a good understanding of sort of all the pieces of the city and how to help navigate within that to actually get things done and move things forward. And because I had a little bit of time left in the day, I ended up appointed to the Lane County Planning Commission in 2021. So that's been a lot of sort of my background for my profession. I do nonprofit and public service, public sector management. So right now I'm a human resources is my profession and that's my type. Thank you.
Okay, Ethan.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ethan Clevenger. I'm a small business owner here in Eugene. I have a business downtown, Porter House Clothing and Supply, and then my wife and I live in Jefferson West Side. You know, I originally put my business downtown very intentionally. It's kind of a boutique menswear store if you haven't been in there. And so I think a lot of people here are kind of that part of the business plan, putting it downtown and they think, but I'm crazy. Because there are places in Eugene that I think are kind of traditionally or as we think about them, more, more welcoming and more likely to be successful for a business like that. But I buy into downtowns as a concept and I buy into Eugene's downtown. The, the idea of a downtown area in a city is that it is a place we've all agreed upon that this is where dense residential and commercial activity takes place. There should be an economic hub for our city and it should be a place that represents what makes our city livable. And right now downtown is a microcosm of all of the things about our city that I think don't do that well. It is a place where it is difficult to run a business. It is a place where people in Eugene are very happy to share with you that they do not go anymore. It does not have the residential population that you would think it does. It does not have the commercial tenants that you would think it would. And that is, so, so I live that every day. And I see how our lack of housing, how our lack of services, I see how that all manifests downtown. And it's, it's really a, a large priority for me to, to make our downtown successful. And I think that that is going to, I believe that that, any solutions that we implement that help downtown be better at housing people, be better at providing services to people. I believe that will impact the rest of the city as well and bring it along for the ride. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ted Koopman and I'm of course running for Ward One City Council. So I moved to Eugene in 2016 in February and found myself on the Board of Jefferson West Side Neighbors Neighborhood Association in that April and I've served since and as Chair since 2018. I'm a retired college professor. So I've had a lot of experience working across a wide variety of stakeholders and governmental and non-governmental organizations. It's funny, I actually came to this meeting for the first time virtually in 2019 to try to get the chamber involved in addressing our homelessness problem, which they weren't ready to do yet. But I was happy several years later when they formed the Business Leaders Task Force on Homelessness, which I've served on both the Accountability and the Data Committees. As Neighborhood Chair, I've worked cooperatively with Homes for Good to develop 80 units of affordable housing at the old Naval Reserve Site as well as bring in permanent supportive housing at Lane Event Center with Keystone. I've worked with Lane Event Center quite a bit and including Ellen Benavides at the M's over that project and trying to encourage that. And running Public Process with Lane County Health with their place in their Matt Clinic on 13th and Lawrence. Also, working with Public Works on infrastructure improvements and working with local businesses who have been disproportionately impacted by street homelessness, crime, and random acts of street repair and revisions, which we've seen a lot of. And I think that this is a major problem for us, that we really need to do a better job addressing those concerns and making sure that before we make policy or do road work, that we need to construct, engage with those local businesses to mitigate those negative impacts.
Great, thank you. We're going to move on to our first official question. I'm going to skip the first one, which was tell us about yourself while you're running, because I feel like that was your intro. So the question for you all, and we'll start with Ethan, we're going to just rotate. What do you believe is the biggest challenge facing Eugene and how do you plan to address it?
Yeah, so our biggest challenge right now is almost certainly housing, because it manifests in so many different ways. We, you know, we, it manifests in the affordability of housing for, for anyone in Eugene. And it also manifests in, in houselessness, right? When housing is expensive, it should come as no surprise that folks with co-occurring mental illness or drug addiction or other challenges in their lives are the first to become homeless. So the, the more we can add to the supply of housing in this community, the more we can alleviate some of those issues that come along with that. I think we can do that through, through, we've done really good work on developing policies and changing policies that allow us to fill in housing. But I'd really like to see us start to be a little more proactive as well on those projects. It's great to allow a business owner to, or a homeowner to add an ADU. But if we can seek out folks who own lots that are as of now severely underdeveloped, I think we can figure out what blocks them and how we can move those projects along as well.
Great. Ted, I'll repeat the question. So what do you believe is the biggest challenge facing Eugene and how do you plan to address it?
Well, I mean, all these problems are intersectional with each other, but I think you need to go farther upstream. And it would be, we lack the strong political and social and cultural infrastructures of the city to deal with these problems. And I think that's a leadership issue at City Council and just the structure of our political system. We need to send, create a sense of community, common purpose, unity, and sense of mutual responsibility and a vision for the future as a city. And I don't think we have that. We've gotten away from Envision Eugene, which was supposed to be our guiding document. And so I think if we're going to handle these problems, we need to really look at the way government functions and the way government is structured. We need to create agency by reforming city government, professionalize city council and put the mayor in charge. People who are directly accountable to voters and who can remove them if they fail to perform. We need more equity in our leadership choices and the current system just doesn't provide for that.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Eliza, what do you believe is the biggest challenge for Eugene and how would you plan to address it?
So I, I do think that housing and homelessness are the biggest challenge facing Eugene. When I, when I walk down the street, I can see how this is affecting everyone in our community. The, I, doing these forums is amazing because it's, okay, solve homelessness, one minute, go. So I think it is a problem that needs a lot of different things happening. Because, you know, housing is a piece of it, mental health care is a piece of it, economics, jobs are a piece of it. All of those things need solutions that are going to work together. And I can list out a bunch of different things and I will run out of time. And so I think a lot of it is really looking both at sort of the short-term things that are going to address immediate impacts, but also looking at some of the systems we have in place that has sort of led us to this place and how can we shift direction there. It's going to require a lot of collaboration with partners at the county, with partners at the state and doing that work. And I'll do a full list of things at a later date.
Thank you. Right, thank you all. For this next question, we'll start with Ted. The Chamber's mission is to support a strong vibrant economy which enables individuals to live happy, healthy lives. What do you think businesses need for a strong local economy? And what do you feel is the role of a city councilor in supporting local business?
Well, I think ultimately it's about predictability and being able to plan for the future. And we need to, the city needs to send better and clearer signals on policy that allow for future planning. The focus right now we have in the city is seeing everything what they call through the equity lens. And I think that's great, but we really need to look at things through an economic lens. And that means that we have to pay attention to the fact that local businesses pay for everything. We can't do anything. There is no equity. There is no social services or is nothing without the economic activity from local businesses. And so we need to, to really foreground that and, and surface those issues before we start making policy about things. And I just don't see that as happening. So ultimately, I think as a city councillor, it would be my desire to stand up and say, you know, we need to consult with impacted industries. We need a better understanding of markets and I just don't think we get that from staff.
All right, we'll go to Eliza next. Do you want me to repeat the question?
No, I'll, I'll just, I'll just go. So I think a lot of the things that, that businesses need to be successful and to have a thriving economy are the same things that everyone is saying that they need to be successful. I feel like housing, housing, housing keeps getting talked about in this campaign. It is one of the biggest issues. And it's something that I hear from people who are just residents saying, we need more housing in Eugene. But as someone who hires people, like that's one of the things I do for my job is I hire people. It's making it, the housing crisis in Eugene is making it hard to get good employees. I have people turn down jobs. I'm trying to get them to come to Eugene. They have a skill set that we need in this community and they will not take the job because they can't find housing they can afford here. And, or housing at all, right? Some, some of these are very high-paid positions and they're like, there's no housing for me. I can't move there. And so I think addressing a lot of these biggest concerns that we have will also help with businesses and with economic development.
I would like you to repeat.
Okay. The Chamber's mission is to support a strong vibrant economy which enables individuals to live happy, healthy lives. What do you think businesses need for a strong local economy? And what do you feel is the role of a city councillor in supporting local business?
Yeah. So for, for businesses in, in the chamber to be successful in that mission, it does, it is about, you know, being able to employ people, being able to run a business, being able to pay good wages and good benefits and be a good steward of the community. In terms of what city council can do to facilitate that, I think what businesses, right now I think there is, you know, perceived real, however it exists. There's an adversarial sort of bent in the relationship between the city and business owners. I think there are folks on city council who essentially don't take calls from certain entities in the business community. So, so what I have found is that, and this is not true of just business community, this is true of, of a large number of constituencies within our city. Folks want to feel engaged. They don't just want to feel heard, like being heard and communicating to people is great. But they also want to feel engaged, especially business owners who are used to being decision makers in their day-to-day life. They want to know why decisions were made and how they can be a part of reaching those decisions.
Thank you. So we'll go back to Eliza for this first, for this next question. Eugene's crisis around housing affordability, supply and diversity of housing types has had a dire impact to business. What strategies to improve these would you support? And what new ideas do you have to bring to the role as a city councillor?
So making housing easier to create in Eugene is what I've, is what I've been working on for a long time. I spent a lot of time reading zoning code and talking to council and looking at various different methodologies to do that. We've done a great job with removing a lot of those barriers from the code, the zoning code to housing. And now I think we need to start moving on to some of those next steps. Some of that is looking at process. There's a lot of places where if someone wants to create housing in our community, they end up having to fill out thousands of sheets of paper. They get held up. They have like, you know, if there's any sort of opposition that can really scuttle the entire project. I also think we need to look at financing surrounding this. One of the bigger barriers now for people who want to do things like ADUs is getting the money in order to be able to do that. So looking at things like revolving loan funds and things like that to help, help folks be able to make that project a reality.
Thank you. Ethan, same question. Did I repeat it?
Sure.
Okay. Eugene's crisis around housing affordability, supply and diversity of housing types has had a dire impact to business. Or has had dire impacts to business. What strategies to improve these would you support? And what new ideas do you have to bring to the role as a city councillor?
Yeah, two elements of this I like to talk about. When I talk to people in development and land use, what I hear a lot about working with the city is that sometimes it kind of depends on who you get paired with. Which suggests to me that from the top down, something is going on in the city where we are not walking our pro-housing talk. And I think it needs to be very clear to everyone working in the city that we are a pro-housing city. Zoning code is not always black and white. When you have an opportunity to exercise some discretion on a project or you're charting new territory, let's do it in a pro-housing way, a way that gets these projects built and underway. The other thing I'd like to see the city do is to find opportunities to, you know, I mentioned proactiveness earlier. I'd like to see us engage property owners and developers on opportunities in our community that are currently not being taken advantage of. Lots where perhaps a property owner has been sitting on it for a long time. It's essentially blight. And we really need to meet with those folks one-on-one to understand, okay, what is your plan here? And how can we make this a mutual win? How can we get this product, get a project underway on this lot?
Okay, thank you. I'll repeat it for you, Ted.
That's okay.
You got it? Okay.
Yeah. I think, I guess I'm more traditionalist in the sense that the city's focus should be on creating physical and service infrastructures to, to support new construction, which I don't think, you can't build it unless you have that infrastructure in place. We have a lot of open space that we can't build on because there's no infrastructure. So improving permitting and reducing STCs for projects that help meet broader goals. And that way you can guide investment and development, I think is a good place to start. We should focus on more climate and ecologically sound conversion and re-tasking of existing structures for residential multifamily use, which we get a lot in Jefferson West Side. I, I think we need to return to Envision Eugene's development of major transportation corridors by upzoning the Sixth and Seventh Street Corridor to mixed-use commercial residential and extend, extending. by upzoning the Sixth and Seventh Street corridor to mixed use commercial residential and extend, extending Muppin, Muppin. With a provision that would scale benefits based on the percentage of affordable housing units, which I think is a much better use of that particular incentive.
Alright, great. To our next question and Ethan here, you're up first, right? Many Eugene Chamber members have expressed that improving downtown is a top priority for their business. What do you think needs to be improved downtown and how would you work to make that happen?
And that's a really like massive question tied up in a lot of things we've already talked about. But one thing I'll touch on that we've not talked about yet and an idea that is, I'll admit somewhat new to me, is an ideal placemaking downtown. Right now, I don't know if any of you have been downtown for the Halloween event that goes on every year. That's a joint project between the city and downtown Eugene merchants. That event has no business being as successful as it is, but parents bring their kids to trick or treat at businesses. It is shoulder to shoulder on the sidewalk. It's a zoo. And it's the only event that happens downtown each year that is that way and it's incredible. That day, nobody cares about the things that aren't going right in downtown because all you see is what's going wrong. Or nobody cares about the things going wrong because all you see are the things going right. So I think we can engage in more placemaking downtown. Right now, if you're not talking about the Fifth Street Market, you're talking about downtown core. Well, what is that? You can't market that, you can't pitch that. So how do we make this a true like arts and culture district, lean into our strengths as a city? And make that a, a real place downtown and invest in the programming that happens there that is part of Eugene's, Eugene's identity.
Great, thank you.
Well, I think we could maybe start by not tearing up every single north, south street in downtown simultaneously. That'd be a good start. So, uh, to me vacant storefronts and buildings are blight that drags down nearby businesses. Obviously, there's an incentive for those business owners to keep those storefronts vacant. And I think what we need to do is what Arcata did back in the nineties is that you increase the costs for those vacant storefronts in order to incentivize them, maybe lowering leases or doing some kind of activity because it really is, may have negative impact on associated businesses. We need to prioritize active ground floor uses, so street facing spaces and active retail services to provide traffic and eyes on the street. As Ethan was saying, the more good activity we have, the less bad activity we're going to get. And third, uh, active and expedited graffiti abatement, which is, uh, would be very nice because it creates a sense of disorder and blight downtown. And finally, we need to start enforcing existing rules on smoking and public drug use.
Eliza, would you like me to repeat it?
Sure.
Okay. Many Eugene Chamber members have expressed that improving downtown is a top priority for the businesses. What do you think needs to be improved downtown and how would you work to make that happen?
So, uh, several of the things that other folks have already mentioned, I might just go last on this question. The other things I would kind of look at in addition to some of those pieces are what makes downtown vibrant is having people downtown. And particularly since people have shifted more towards remote work, um, the number of people downtown during, during the day has, has declined some. Um, and so I think it's really looking at, first of all, how do we make better use of some, some of the office spaces downtown? How do we encourage, uh, people to be downtown? And then I think it's also looking at getting more housing downtown. Because there are two, three reasons why people would be downtown. They live there, they work there, or they're there to engage in cultural or shop, shopping, those sort of things. And so if we, if we need to sort of build more in that third sort of space to have people be in downtown because they live there.
I'm going to go to the next question. Ted, you're up first on this one. So investments in economic development opportunities are a powerful tool that the city has in leveraging public dollars to attract private investment. This in turn helps to create jobs, boost economic activity and ultimately bring in new tax revenues that support the city's general fund. How will you prioritize projects and opportunities that support economic vibrancy?
Well, we definitely need to do a better job on calculating return on investment when it comes to spending public money. And also educating the public on the fact that this is an activity that happens on a regular basis. And it happens for a good reason in a lot of municipalities and at the federal level as well. We need to provide better services and physical infrastructure that creates space for private economic activity. As, as I mentioned before, is a core government function. We need to carefully choose investments with high returns. The M Stadium is a really great example where a fifteen million dollar bond is going to give us forty million dollars a year going forward in economic activity, not to mention all the other benefits. Projects with good short term job creation, long term economic activity and goods and services that directly benefit to the public is the sweet spot.
Eliza, we'll repeat it for you.
Okay.
Investments in economic development opportunities are a powerful tool that the city has in leveraging public dollars to attract private investment. This in turn helps to create jobs, boost economic activity and ultimately bring in new tax revenues to support the city's general fund. How will you prioritize projects and opportunities that support economic vibrancy?
I think it is looking both at the ones that are going to be most successful and most beneficial and bringing the most economic activity, but also looking at where there's a nexus between other city goals and other community goals. So when you're talking about prioritization, one of the things I hear a lot, that's so from Ward One because Ward One we have a lot of, of good options, a lot of good choices. But when you start talking about some of the different communities, they talk about, we don't have a grocery store nearby that we can walk to. We don't have restaurants nearby that we can go to. And so some of it is looking at how do we, how do we encourage and support those businesses and those, make, make those viable in those places where, where folks are saying like, hey, this is, this is businesses that we need. And so looking at, at how we can invest in that way to create nexus between various communities.
I think I'll, I think I can say.
You just didn't go for it, okay.
The one, I'll, I'll touch on two things. One is I would like to see us have an economic development plan as a city. Right now, we have nothing codified, we have nothing on paper. And, uh, we have some assets locally that I think we could take advantage of that we don't. We don't have a great history of working closely with University of Oregon. They're pumping ungodly amounts of money into biotech and sports science. So is that part of a proper economic development plan for our city? We have a lot of really great existing businesses in food manufacturing. Is that part of an economic development plan for our city? Capitalizing on those things we already do well. And I think by codifying that, that allows us to go to potential businesses and employers who would open up in this area and show them that we are thinking about them specifically. This is a city niched out for them. The other thing I'd like to see us do is make some of our business growth plans, growth loans at the city more accessible to some of these small neighborhood, main street businesses that Eliza's talking about. Right now, uh, the minimum growth loan you can get from the city is seventy five thousand dollars. You have to match that one for one if you're not a woman or running already own business. I think we can do better. Not every business needs to put down seventy five, hundred and fifty grand at the end of the day.
Great. Okay, Eliza, I'll have you start next on this one. How will you involve the voice of business in decision making? It's hard, is Ted's first, okay.
Oh no, I'm last.
Oh. You haven't answered the question. Let's go, I apologize.
Normally I would, I would completely dodge that. I will not. I will show my respect, right? Okay. I think this is where the economic lens comes into play. Any decision making process that impacts businesses and markets should be analyzed in conjunctions with those interests, i- industries and businesses. And to chart a path that maximizes benefits and mitigates cost and impacts because there's always cost and impacts to anything that you're going to do. Rain control and the natural gas ban are good examples of the failures to take those steps. Not only should impacted parties be consulted, but they should also be listened to and their concerns factored in the, into any final ordinance. I don't think that happens. A lot of times when the city makes plans, once that plan hits paper, they are mowed to change anything. And so those, uh, that feedback from businesses and industry doesn't really happen. It also helps to keep us out of court. So I think that good public process in that sense, when it comes to the business community, different industries is key.
Okay. I'm going to re-center here. So you went first the last time, Eliza, right? Alright, so Ethan, now you're up first for this question. I apologize to you guys. Okay. So a question for Ethan to start with. How will you involve the voice of business in the decision making process for issues that affect our community?
So as a city councillor, part of your job is that engagement piece. And so I think that means, you know, there are a lot of business organizations in town that, that are engaged with local politics. Do city councillors always engage them? No. So being a, a frequent, I'll call it frequent, uh, attendee to LGAC, I think, is an opportunity for city councillors to keep, uh, to, to have an understanding of what's important to the business community. We also have smaller business incubators happening with like Corte de Familia, De la Familia and Black Cultural Initiative. Both have their own business incubator programs. Those are places that we need to be engaged directly as city councillors. So, uh, in some ways, this is a little bit similar to what we hear from a lot of different constituencies, constituencies in town. In that it's great to have public comment at city council meetings, but that's not super accessible to everyone all the time. And so it's really important as a city councillor to carve out time in your schedule to go out and meet folks where they're at. And what, in a way that makes sense for their, their priorities.
Ted, you want me to repeat it?
Uh, no. Again, you need to consult the people, whether it's neighborhoods or whether it's businesses or industries. You need to consult those people that are going to be impacted and actually listen to them. We should, uh, we should look at ordinances the way, um, software engineers approach code. In terms of, uh, you look for bugs and then you try and break it. And I don't think we do that. It's like, is this going to work? What are the negative impacts? What's the best way we can structure this? How might it fail? And we improve it over multiple iterations. Again, currently that is something that really does not happen, um, with, with staff. Is that, um, we don't do that iterative work and take the time. But then again, on the other hand, there's too much time. You know, uh, public process, do a lot of public process in the neighborhood association should be like punk rock. Short, simple, intense and loud. And you can accomplish a lot in a very short period of time.
Eliza, can I repeat it for you? Sure. How will you involve the voice of business in the decision making process for issues that affect our community?
So I think there are lots of different places where you can connect with the voice of business. The Chamber is obviously a very good resource. We mentioned some other places that we're doing business incubation. And also recognizing that the business community is not uniform. That different businesses are going to have different priorities, different interests. And I think one of the biggest challenges on city council was recognizing that you're going to get folks who have diametrically opposed visions and diametrically opposed ideas of what we should be doing. And how do you help ensure that those folks are feeling engaged, are feeling like they're, they're being able to influence that? And so that's going to involve talking and connecting with a lot of them and really spending time to kind of hear where they're coming from. So not just the three minutes of public comment, but really connecting at places like this, events like this and other places. You know, just even out in the community, you know, just talking to folks when you're at the store. Hey, I see that your, your store is being reduced your hours, what's going on? So, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Ethan, I'll start with you on this one. How do you intend? I know normally I write it and I don't have pen.
We've been to a lot of these and nobody has gotten it. So don't feel bad.
Okay, so Ted, um, how do you intend to solicit feedback from the local business community to ensure that the city's regulatory policies are practical and effective?
Well, as I said, I think I kind of covered this in the previous question. Is that you really need to take the time to try to understand a market and understand specific industries because they are all unique and they operate in their own way. So also there's a chance of, uh, for scaling in terms of businesses, large and leading and small employers, like manufacturing. And so what you need to do is you need to consult with those groups early and iteratively through the process when you're actually writing the ordinance to start with. I definitely think that, um, venues like the Chamber is a good place for that. But not every group belongs to the Chambers. There's the Eugene Business Alliance, which is out in West Eugene. And I've done a lot of work with them in terms of our mutual issues with homelessness. And I think that there's a lot that you can do to kind of scale it down, get those business groups to operate together. Talk about it, work with staff and then present a, uh, as much of a unified vision as they possibly can.
Alright, I can, don't need the question repeated. I think one of the key things is figuring out how to connect with the right people at the right times. One of the things that I've been hearing about lately is that there really isn't a good, the city doesn't know all the businesses that are, that are here. And so they can't really say like, okay, we're working on regulations surrounding this, we should connect with these specific groups. So I think one of the things that happens is we end up with almost feedback fatigue, right? We blast our, here's what we're up to to the same small group of people and they can't always track it. And so like sometimes there'll be, there'll be an issue that comes up that they, that is not impacting them directly. And so they, they don't comment on it because you know, they're like, I've commented on these fourteen other things and I have other things to do with my life. And then, but we don't connect with those people who actually that issue is the one that's really there. So I think as a starting place, getting a much better sense of what are the businesses in Eugene? How do we reach them and how do we connect with them when we identify that there's an issue coming up that is going to impact them more specifically?
Great.
I'll take the question.
Okay. Ethan, how do you intend to solicit feedback from the local business community to ensure that the city's regulatory policies are practical and effective?
Yeah, um, I think I'd like, I want to come back on that, the collaborative piece. Folks want to feel heard and engaged and they want to feel like they were able to shape what kind of came out of the thing. And so by engaging early as a city, uh, I think that allows us to ensure that the, the business community, among our many other constituencies, has an opportunity to do that. Right now, we're really good. We, we, we put together these listening sessions and these round tables. And I do feel like it can be common that some of the same folks get picked for a lot of those same things. And so how do we kind of diversify the folks that we're getting feedback from, make it a little more targeted? And then like at some point, those, those listening sessions are really good for collecting feedback, but I do think it needs to be a two way conversation. I know personally, I, I remember an opportunity, I saw Julie Faye at a coffee shop and said, Julie, I'm a self-employed person. And I know the Technology Association of Oregon offers group health insurance and I can't buy into their program because I am a single employee and that Oregon says you can't do that. What's the deal? And she explained to me, well, this is the risk pool, this is why we set it up this way. And I get to the end of that conversation and I'm like, you know what? I get why we did that. It's frustrating, but I'm on board. And thank you for taking the time to explain that to me.
There's a couple of things going on. I apologize for me. There's the Zoom link isn't working and so all these people are like, I can't get it. So it's fine.
No, no judgment.
I apologize. I'm distracted. I'm trying to multitask and I'm not one to say that I can do that. The next question for Eliza to start. What strategies or measures will you consider to enhance public safety in the neighborhoods and business areas?
So I think, um, first of all, we need to be working to make sure that we get the right response to the right problems. There's a lot of work that has been going into that lately. We've been investing in community service officers to make sure that things that don't necessarily need, like a fully sworn officer with a gun can get a faster response. We've been working with Lynn County, uh, to bring in mental health providers who can go along with the police to, uh, address particular issues where maybe a mental health response would be good, but it's too dangerous frankly for cahoots. And so I think continuing to invest in those efforts to make sure that we can use our resources in a way that means that we're getting the right response to the right situation. And I think making sure that we, we, uh, really look at how we're, we're funding that and make sure that we keep, keep making sure that we, we're putting the right resources there.
Then what strategies or measures will you consider to enhance public safety in the neighborhoods and business area?
Yeah, so some of our public safety concerns come directly from not having sufficient services in our community for the folks who need it. And so that's, that's a revenue problem and that's really like broader than I think this question. But, uh, I, I do, those things have to be in place so that when we come in with kind of the law enforcement arm of things, we know that the folks that we're dealing with are folks who have got all the options possible in front of them. I do also think that a diverse response model is going to be hugely important. We're a country that's having a, a bit of a reckoning with how we conduct law enforcement. And I think that Eugene is a city that has, um, traditionally, uh, that's the sort of path that we want to trailblaze. We've, we've experimented with some volunteer law enforcement operations downtown. Um, I haven't gotten great feedback from business owners downtown on that. It's probably, uh, a result of it being a volunteer operation. So formalizing some of that on, um, more on EP payroll, I think will be, uh, will be a great move.
So, uh, Chief Skinner has a, has a good plan. Um, he came to the neighborhood. He came to the neighborhood association when he first, um, when he was first hired. And it was the first time anybody from the city had shown up, talked, and I felt better afterward because I'm like, oh, thank God someone's got a plan. Um, and we should execute that plan. The CSOs are a great cost-effective solution to better public safety, especially for quality of life crimes. These are things that don't normally get addressed and affects the vast majority of people. The, the, the safety payroll tax is definitely working. You can see the reports. We're getting good traction as far as that's concerned. Ultimately, I really think it comes back to addressing, um, street homelessness. And that can only happen through an expansion of sanctioned camping while steadily restricting the scope of street camping until we can completely eliminate it. That should be our primary goal. If we can bring better order to the streets, a sense of order to the streets that's going to improve public safety and the climate in our business and residential areas. Public, uh, I'll go ahead and then.
All right, the la- last prepared question and then we're going to go to questions from the audience. So reminder, if you have a question, now you know that most, all, all, all but one you've heard. So if you have one that we haven't already touched on, please feel free to try to put it on a hard John Collected. My last question for Ethan to start. What is your long-term vision for Eugene and how will you ensure that your decisions provide a vibrant, sustainable community for future generations?
Before my timer starts, this is not intended to be a closing statement.
Okay, correct.
Yeah, so, so I look at our city and I want our, we have to balance the things that people love about living in Eugene with the realities of being a city that continues to grow, continues to take on population within a global economy. There are folks who don't want to see large businesses, startups, tech this, uh, they don't want to see those things come to our community. They want our community to stay small and quirky and these, these great things that we love about it. But, you know, I think the reality is that our food gets more expensive, just like anyone else. So having employers who can pay a good wage is really important to this community. That's the reality. I think we can do that in a way that continues to hold close to the sort of unique things, uh, that people love about Eugene. You know, we can, we can continue to invest in a local folk art scene. We can continue to support the slug queen pageants and the things that people really love about Eugene while also being a good place to do business and earn a good wage.
Okay, great, thank you. Ted, you want me to read again?
Uh, no, it's okay. Um, again, I'm going to, I'm going to go up a scale. You do, the fundamentals of Eugene are incredibly strong in terms of the diversity of the business environment, the cultural offerings, university, um, a lot of different interesting vibrant neighborhoods. But we have a leadership issue. We need to build a better democratic system relies on building coalitions to afford solutions instead of creating silos that play different groups off against each other to achieve often narrow and ideological ends. That's why I think we need charter reform and to, uh, put po- political elected responsible people in charge of city government. Strengthening and supporting neighborhood associations as a foundation of community engagement and democracy can help revive our civic culture. Will help fight social isolation and provide pathways into public service and political office. We have that structure in place. It exists. We are under utilizing it and we need to reinforce it. And I think that can go a long way towards building a vibrant future.
Yeah, great. Eliza, I'm, I'm going to repeat it just for everyone. Okay. What is your long-term vision for Eugene and how will you ensure that your decisions provide a vibrant, sustainable community for future generations?
So I feel like Eugene is really at a transition point right now. Where the, when you think about what is the difference between a city with like a capital C and a town? It's really, I think over the past, uh, couple, past decade or two, really started moving in that more sort of city direction. And I think that's creating, you know, a lot of tension within our community. Because we do have folks who are like, well, I came here because it was a town. It was a smaller community. And, uh, but it is going to be moving into that city direction. And so I think a lot of it is really looking at how do we, how do we move, get through that transition in a way that's going to be, uh, bring us more together as a community, bring us more a sort of shared sense of identity. And sort of what, that vision of what Eugene is as in this new, new era that, that we can really like all sort of get behind. And so I can sort of state my vision, but that vision is going to have to be sort of everyone's vision. So.
Okay, great. I now have, um, some questions from the audience. You guys ready? Uh, okay. So what I'll do is I'll start with Ted on this and then we'll kind of do the same thing. Um, and we just kind of look to prioritize a bit based on, you know, answers you've already given. So. So Ted, I'll start with you. Given the budget shortfall and agreed focus on housing, which requires investment. So you all agree on that housing is the big priority. What programs or services might you be willing to forego?
Wow. So wow, you always have to take from, so if you want something, you have to take from somebody. It's better to grow the pie, right? Is that you need to grow the pie, um, to have better economic activity and more income. As far as cutting services, uh, certain core functions, we would need to look at that. Public safety, fire, those kind of provisions. I think that, um, one thing we could do is look to cut is to cut from the top down. Cuts usually happen from the bottom up, which means you have to cut a lot of people to get the same impact. We're hiring our third assistant city manager right now. These are the highest paid people in city government and I'm just not convinced that more than one city assistant city manager is the way to go. So I think if we're going to evaluate this, we need to cut administrative bloat. No matter where you go in terms of government, uh, within the university, administrative bloat is the biggest problem that we face and tends to self-replicate. And so if we're going to start cutting, the staff that actually do the work on the ground should be the priority and that administrative staff should take the axe.
Great. I'll, I'll ask the question again. Go to Eliza. Thank you. Given budget shortfalls and agreed focus on housing, which requires an investment, uh, what services and programs are you willing to forego?
So I think Eugene has, it's a very complex question because there are programs and services that I might be like, oh, okay. That we could maybe live without this. And then I find out it's self-funded. And so even if we forego it, it's not going to help with the budget, uh, shortfalls. I think that, I think that a lot of it is looking at those programs that are, are sort of nice to have programs. Eugene has some very, uh, robust, um, sort of park offerings, some robust recreational offerings. And I really enjoy those and I love those and it hurts, um, to kind of make these statements. But I feel like we have to, have to be honest about what we're facing. And so kind of saying like, okay, are these things that are going to impact the health and safety of our community or are these things that are more sort of nice to have? And so I think trying not to eliminate those, but seeing where we can scale back or we can figure so that we're still offering the service, just maybe not as much as we have historically.
Great. Ethan, I'll repeat the question. So given budget shortfalls and agreed focus on housing, which requires investment, what services or programs are you willing to forego?
Yeah, so, uh, I'm really glad a lot of you brought up like kind of the parks. I just saw the, the summer Parks and Rec book and I'm very impressed at how thick it is. We do have a ton of programming there. And I think one thing the city can do better is to be very intentional with our spend and do a few things really well rather than a lot of things kind of good. There were some projects downtown around wayfinding. For instance, we put up, I, I want to say something between a hundred and two hundred of these little blue signs that tell you how to get to Wow Hall in the Holt Center. And now they have graffiti on them and, uh, I think they suffer from banner blindness. They could be the handicap parking sign. They could be a stop sign. It blends into the background, right? So I think there's some opportunity to be more focused with our dollars and rather than spend on, on high volume, really narrow down and, and spend on things that have a greater impact and would be truly considered investments in our community. Those, to use those signs as an example, those, um, serve as something of a wayfinding tool, but we also have that on our phone. What they don't do is create a sense of place. Um, so I think those are opportunities to spend a little more intelligently.
Okay, another question. So here's what we're going to do. We're going to try to get through as many of these as possible. And then I want to make sure we have time for your closing statement. So that will be how we wrap up, but questions coming if you have them. Uh, so Eliza, we'll start with you. One tool unique to downtown Eugene is MUD. What are your thoughts on its usefulness for residential development and why is it not being used more in the downtown core?
So I'll, I'll answer this question in reverse order. Why is it not being used more? Uh, Capstone. I think that that project and the sort of, uh, controversy and outcomes of that project, I walk by Capstone every day on my way to work. And it is definitely not the prettiest and best maintained building we have ever built in our community. And I think that that has really made people very scared of MUD. That it's a tool that, that folks are like, well, we can't do this because it's a, it's a waste of money. It's a bad thing. It's going to produce bad outcomes. And I feel like many of the MUD projects that we have done have actually been amazing projects that have produced really good outcomes and produced really good housing for our community. I think that when used well, MUD can be a really valuable tool to help make sure that we get housing into our community, get housing into our downtown and actually increase our tax yields. Because for all of the pain that came out of Capstone, uh, starting next year, there'll be another six hundred thousand dollars a year going into the city's property taxes.
So Ethan, you're next. Uh, one tool unique to downtown Eugene is MUD. Multi-unit property taxing in exemption. Sorry, thank you for anyone who's listening and doesn't know what that acronym is. Uh, what are your thoughts on its usefulness for residential development and why is it not being used more in the downtown core?
Yeah, MUD by design puts up the exact kind of housing that you want in, the exact kind of property that you want in downtown and that it is a mix of housing and commercial. You know, uh, it's, and it's something that you really have to stand by as a counselor in this community if you believe in it. Because, uh, I know Counselor Keating was recently skewered over it at a community forum. It's not popular with a lot of folks who maybe, uh, don't see its usefulness in downtown or they see it as robbing from the city. But like Eliza said, it is a long-term investment and we're about to see that pay off on one of the early MUD projects. So I think one thing the city can do better, um, is in telling the, telling the story of MUD. You know, our, our communication strategy with public, I think, is, is somewhat fractured. There are a variety of email newsletters you can get and some opaquely named projects that we embark on. And I, I think unifying all of that and, and telling a story better and advocating on our own behalf is something we don't do very well right now. And I would love to see the city advocate for itself.
Great, thank you.
Well, again, I would agree. We just don't explain how MUD works and people think it's this big subsidy. I'm not a big fan of, if a project pencils out, it pencils out and if it doesn't, it doesn't get built. But we have it. It can be, it can be leveraged. But I think what we need to do is we need to change the way that calculation is made in terms of the tax, property tax benefits that you get and directly tie that into the percentage of affordable units in that particular building. So you get less money, you get less property tax breaks over time, um, if it's purely commercial. But if you start to scale up and include more affordable units, I think that's the best use of MUD and how it should be reformed. And we should build into that. The Dutch have a system where social housing is required for all developments. And what it does is it creates huge benefits for low-income people, um, by mixing people of different socioeconomic groups. This is a big benefit in Jefferson West Side. You have seven hundred thousand dollar houses, but we're seventy-five percent renters and a third of the neighborhood is on SNAP. Mixing those groups is, is good for all of us. And I think that's the direction we should be going in.
Hey, guys are good on the timer.
Practice.
Done a few of these, I mean. Okay, we'll start with Ethan on this next one. Um, so as you all know, word one is, we'll, we'll represent downtown. So there's a, obviously a reason to connect this question to downtown. Many of our arts spaces are in downtown. A recent study showed that a hundred and twenty-four million dollars of economic impact generated are generated by our arts and culture sector. What is the city's role in supporting this important sector? Ethan, you can start.
I think that's something that we need, that's a story we need to tell and it's something that we need to codify as part of a larger economic development plan. And when we talk about spending city money efficiently, perhaps that's, you know, the best place to be spending it is on those arts programs that do generate a lot of economic activity, um, in our community. Right now, First Friday Art Walk happens, um, well, as you might expect, the first Fridays every month in downtown. In my experience as a downtown business owner, staying open late for that is that it can be a bit of a crapshoot. Some months are very well attended. Folks come out. Some months are pretty quiet. And I would like to see that be more consistent. I would like to have us, uh, see us have a reputation for that. And I think that's bigger than just giving money to Lane Arts Council and saying, here, do your best, right? I think the city can, can step up and be a more active partner in that. So that's, I, I would like to see us lean into that as a city rather than simply relying on private business and nonprofits kind of handle the bulk of it. I think we can, we can be more proactive.
Okay, perfect. Ted, uh, many of our art spaces are in downtown. Recent studies showed a hundred and twenty-four million dollars of economic impact generated for our, our arts and culture sector. What is the city's role in supporting this important sector?
Well, I started telling Eugene of his friends and families in the mid-nineties. And there was a ton of stuff that was going on downtown. Um, there's your Eugene celebration. Um, and over time, a lot of those things kind of went away. And it's not unique to Eugene. I moved here from Santa Cruz, California. It was the same way. It's like first night was a great thing until it like strangled on its own success and then it went away. So I think that building up a steady stream of major events downtown where we can leverage those open spaces and bring people downtown and then having enough lead time. So the arts community and the performance community and the business community can say, this is going to happen on the third weekend of the month, every month, all year round. And structure that so people can plan for it and people know it's going to happen. And it happens every day, every month at the same time and it goes on over time is the best way to get people in the habit of coming downtown and experience that art and culture.
Eliza, you want, you want me to read again?
Sure.
Okay, many of our arts spaces are in downtown. A recent study showed a hundred and twenty-four million dollars of economic impact generated by our arts and culture sector. What is the city's role in supporting this important sector?
I think the city's role in supporting the sectors is very similar to its role in supporting many other residents and, and businesses in Eugene. There are some differences in how you can provide that support, but it is, you know, there, there's sort of this, this ability to kind of say, we want to make sure that downtown is a welcoming place for people to come and visit. We want to make sure that there are folks downtown who are engaging in those things. There are some things you can do with programming. There are some things you can do with sort of almost a nexus kind of piece. We do, the Holt Center is one of the things that the city does that is downtown, that brings in folks who are interested in arts and culture. And some of the changes that they made with how they do the programming there, I think have been very beneficial. And so I think it's really kind of working in, in sort of a partnership to kind of say like, hey, we're putting all this out there. How can we, how can we kind of work together to to draw more people into that?
All right. So I'm going to go to a next question and Ted will start with you on this one. The UVO student group called Live Move published a survey of the state of sidewalks in Eugene last spring. People are giggling. Uh, are you aware of this survey and if so, do you have any comments about it?
Yes, um, our neighbor, Jefferson West Side neighbors did our first sidewalk survey in, I think, twenty, prior to COVID. Because our sidewalks are travesty. I mean, they're just in pieces of concrete on, on the ground. We don't expect people to maintain the road in front of their house for obvious reasons. And if we're serious about walkability and about building networks, then we need to have networks. And so I met with Sarah McDerry on this. We did a follow-up survey and then we also had this survey group into the neighborhood association. And then there's a group from the, um, um, Far West Neighborhood who also have a petition going. And Emily Simple and, and, and the Neighborhood Association has been grinding on this since 2016. And the city is finally in a spot where they're thinking about, you know, looking for money to do something and it's long overdue. Our suggestion was to build corridors, right? So at least there's some established north, south, east, west walking corridors that people can feel safe navigating.
Okay, same question, Eliza. Live Move published a survey of the state of sidewalks in Eugene last spring. Are you aware of the survey and if so, do you have any comments?
So I think it is abundantly clear to everybody that the state of our sidewalks is not strong. The, uh, solutions to that are really challenging. Because as mentioned, the sidewalks are funded by the property owner who, that has them in. Um, and so, and as also previously mentioned, the city has giant budget gaps. Um, and so a lot of the solution to this is going to be trying to think about how do we navigate funding for this so that we can help invest? Because not every property owner, some property owners just don't care. And they're like, yeah, I'm going to let the sidewalk in front of my building just disintegrate. Some property owners do. They want to fix their sidewalks and they can't afford it or they don't have the funding for it. And so it's really looking at how do we navigate that funding piece? Um, I do think I have some thoughts about like revolving loan funds and things like that that might help. Um, and so that's that's, I think, the first thing to tackle is how do we how do we pay for better sidewalks?
Okay. Ethan, are you aware of this survey? Your thoughts about it?
Yeah, this this specific survey is new to me, but I certainly have the lived experience of tripping on sidewalks in my neighborhood. So uh, yeah, this is a really hard one to balance with a budget shortfall, right? Um, and it's a hard one to balance with a history, uh, you know, established framework in which homeowners are responsible for their sidewalks. I did recently um take part in this sort of placemaking activity that uh some folks at the city uh put on downtown, specifically looking at corridors along Oak and Pearl and bringing traffic from the north side of six and seven to the south side of six and seven. Um, and one thing we talked about was sidewalks and how there is an appetite at the city to change how those are viewed, who is responsible for those. Um, and I think that's uh, I I think that's a path we have to continue down. Um, because I do think that at some point we're going to have to look at sidewalks officially as infrastructure, not as this sort of pseudo-private privately owned thing, but also infrastructure and invest in it accordingly.
All right, so I have another question here. Uh, we'll start with Eliza on this one. Uh, how long do you think it would take to switch Eugene to a strong mayor, weak city manager paradigm?
How long? That that is a very interesting phrasing of a question because I think the first question would be, is that a thing that we actually want to do? Um, so you know, there are pros and cons to strong mayor systems. There are pros and cons to strong city manager systems. I I would want to sort of see like, let's let's have that conversation versus is that the right solution? Or are there some solutions that that maybe we want to, we want to look at some other different ways to do that? And then after that, years? I mean, you've got to amend the charter. That takes some time. You got to go to the voters. Um, and then you've got to like actually have some elections and things like that. So I think I think it would take a number of years if that was a decision that that the community wanted to go towards.
Okay, great. Thank you. Ethan asked the same question, but feel free to answer them, answer it. How do you like? Um, how long do you think it would take to switch us from um a strong mayor to a weak city manager paradigm?
I will preface this by saying that the breadth of my poly-sci background did not cover this process. What I what I do think is, you know, if if that's the route that we ultimately need to go or if our current system um can work well the way it is, like whichever kind of path we end up down, uh, I I think that one thing the city often fails to do well as a as sort of the capital C city is advocate for itself regardless of if that's coming out of city council, a mayor, a city manager, whoever that's coming from. Um, I don't, I just don't see this. When I take part in listening sessions, when I take part in all these activities that are designed to engage the community, they're really great at sitting there and kind of like taking that feedback. But you know, folks feel that that feedback's often not integrated. And I also feel like that ignores an opportunity for the city to lay out, here's, here, here are the things that we want to see from our city and engage people very directly in helping them come along for that vision.
Well, I've been an advocate of that move because I think it our current structure is not working. We have a serious accountability problem. Uh, we have a serious problem in terms of, I mean, Ward One is always competitive, but a lot of wards are not competitive. Um, and so if we want to really have the kind of equity that allows anybody, a barista or a baker or whoever, a small business owners. I've had small business owners and even medium business owners say, I can run for city, I would run for city council, but I can't afford it. Ninety-eight percent of the people can't afford it. As far as the amount of time, I would say to make a complete transition from starting gun to execution for years. I think that is a ton of time. Most of that would just be in structural organizational transitions. I've had a group of uh of leaders who have, um, we've had a serious discussion about bringing that forward as a ballot initiative. And so uh, I think that's definitely something that we could do. Having a public engagement, a formal non-staffed public engagement infrastructure for the city would definitely help that and a lot of other issues as Ethan was discussing.
I agree. All right, I got another one. Ethan, you're up first. Please describe what sanctioned camping looks like to you. And where does any come from? Maybe we'll just stick with the first part of the question. Please describe what sanctioned camping um looks like to you.
Yeah, um, I think right now we actually have a few like really great examples of sanctioned camping in our community. The Safe Sleep Spots, uh, which are a joint project with Community Support and Shelters. Currently offer a a variety, mostly huts uh for people to stay in. Those are in a really interesting collection of locations in town. Um, and what I found really kind of um, what I find kind of the manifest, one of the manifestations of those working well, I have found is like if I'm door knocking around Westmoreland Park, uh, which, you know, near there, there is one of these camps. Um, that park is, that's a very different experience than Monroe Park or the Park Block. That is a park that I think has a lot of really positive activity happening in it. And there's a lot of community investment in it. And for the most part, the folks that I door knock around that park aren't terribly worried about it, even though that camp is right there. So that introducing that stability into people's lives has been really, really successful. And I would love to see our sanction, I I think that's a program that we can continue to capitalize on.
Ted, um, can you describe what sanctioned camping looks like to you?
Well, Community Support and Shelters is is kind of like the gold standard of the sanctioned camping. And the data around that is very clear in terms of the benefits and the stability and the lower crime around those units. We really did a lot of work educating neighbors about it before our 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 sanctioned camping came in at the uh the Jefferson Westside Neighbors Eighteenth Street um um Community Support Shelter site. We have to do it. There is no other, if anybody's got a brilliant idea about how we're going to address what the immediate problem is, which is street camping and people living in unsafe and unsanitary conditions, now would be the time to drop that. We'd have to do it. I think that even if we had to put put those sanctioned camps in the outskirts, it would be cheaper to, from what we're spending now on unsanctioned camping, to run shuttles every twenty minutes to wherever people wanted to go. We do not have another option in terms of addressing street camping. We cannot, we just can't absorb it. We can't, we can't handle the current situation. It's unsustainable.
Eliza, I'll wrap this one up with you. Please describe what sanctioned camping looks like to you.
So I think we do have some very good models with um the Conestoga Huts with, you know, we also have some uh car programs where like folks can, they have a parking lot where they can come with their car and park there safely. I think these are programs that that are working, that we do need to work to expand and we need to report to make sure that we continue to fund. Um, because, you know, I feel like a lot of folks are kind of thinking of this and they're saying like, oh, we just like designate a lot and people can go there. But there's a lot more that goes into it than just saying like, here's the okay place for you to go. Because when we do that, that's what ends up happening is that it ends up, to them becoming a very challenging environment, very uh, not everyone who is going to these camp sites is necessarily um uh, good at uh engaging proactively with their neighbors. And so really, when you're setting up these sanctioned camps, we also need to make sure that we have the appropriate supports there so that they can be safe and healthy places for people to be.
Okay, great. And then ask one more question from the audience and then I'm going to give you all an opportunity to do your closing statements. So the question is, you touched on this a little bit, but I, this one's a little bit more specific uh about the Holt Center. So what role does art and culture, specifically the Holt Center, play in local red and the local resident, oh, come, okay, I'm sorry, I'm going to repeat this. I'm sorry. Okay, what role does art and culture and specifically the Holt Center and the local resident companies play in your vision of Ward One and of downtown Eugene? And I've got Ted.
Okay, uh, I, we, my spouse and I are supporters of Ballet Fantastique and we absolutely love it. They're like the prototype of of a of a culture and arts organization. We brought away Eugene tickets. We love going to all the facilities there. I've kind of lost, would you just?
What what role does the Holt Center and the resident companies play in your vision of Ward One?
Ah, okay, I think it's critical. You know, it really is. If we want to bring people downtown, that's what's going on. We move downtown and I think probably all of us agree just because of that. It's like we can walk downtown, like a bike downtown. And having those kind of cultural resources is something that is incredibly beneficial. And I do think that um it is something uh that is crucial and we should expand upon it. We've got, for a city our size, we have cultural resources like most cities could never even dream of.
All right, Eliza, you want me to repeat it?
No, I'll go. Okay. So, you know, when when I first came to Eugene, the two things I did. First, I started going to public meetings so I could figure out like what was going on with the politics of the city. And the other thing I did was reach out to Oregon Contemporary Theater so that I could uh volunteer there. Um, we did uh backstage moving furniture between scenes, kind of volunteering for them, ushering. I think that that having those those theaters in our downtown, the Holt Center uh is bringing in a lot of big shows and a lot of other things. But then we also have, you know, Oregon Contemporary, we have all of these other uh resources down there. And that is one of those key elements for how we're going to help downtown thrive. Because those are things that that bring people to downtown and we need to be supporting them as we as we go forward.
Yeah, so I think our arts and culture are like a huge part of what I would envision an economic development plan for us to look like. Specifically within Ward One and considering the Holt Center's um sort of schedule. I, one, one thing that I really like wanted to make a priority with downtown Eugene merchants in my role there is creating a more cohesive environment around those experiences. So right now, to be very specific about that, you come out, you go to a show at the Holt Center and let's say it gets over at nine thirty or ten. Your options for what to do after that um are limited pretty much to sports bars and like the Jackalope, right? In that area. And and I love the Jackalope as much as anyone else. But that's not what everyone's looking for. So I'd really love to see, uh, I I want, and this is not necessarily even the role of city government, right? This is the role of a merchant association, to get everyone downtown kind of on board with this idea. This is a place where you can come out for a night and really make a night of it, especially on a Friday or Saturday. Businesses like a more upscale restaurant, a party bar or a bar perloo and these kinds of things, like we really need to see them leaning into and taking advantage of those crowds. Um, so I'd like to see it be a more holistic vision.
Great. We're at, we're at our last part in the in the form here where I'm going to give each of you a couple of minutes to just make a a closing statement. Feel free to share any contact information for anybody who didn't get questions asked. But certainly, and Eliza will start with you, just just sort of ended out of that way, but.
Okay. Well, first of all, I want to say thank you for hosting this. Thank you for getting up. I guess now it's not like quite so early in the morning anymore. It's like getting to be like a more reasonable time. But thank you for for uh uh coming so early in the morning to to come here and ask these questions of us. Uh, my website is uh www.electeliza.com. So if you have additional questions, please feel free to go there and reach out. I really, I really want to see Eugene be the city that we know it can be. Um, we've had a lot of challenges facing us lately. You know, and and it can feel overwhelming sometimes, and I know that. And I can see how people in our community are working so hard to confront those challenges. And you confront them in a way that is going to be constructive, that is going to be um compassionate, that is going to be thoughtful and and successful. And we can, I can see all of these different threads, all of these different people saying, how can we work together to get this, get this solved, get this done? And these are hard problems and they are interconnected problems. And we really need to be looking for solutions that are going to tackle multiple of these problems at the same time. My hope and my hope in running is that the background that I have, particularly surrounding housing and the work with housing, particularly surrounding with the budget committee and the the sort of relationships I've been able to build, both at the county and at the at the state and at the city, is going to help make sure that we can, we can move forward with these projects that I that Ward One can have a city counselor who can hit the ground running from day one to really help us tackle these things. And so, thank you and uh I hope to hear from you more soon.
Okay, Ethan?
Great. Uh, I am uh the only candidate in this race that was uh that received the endorsement of both the Democratic Party in Lane County and the Eugene Chamber. Um, and that generally means I'm not always the most popular person in either of those rooms. Uh, and I think that's okay. Uh, I think what those endorsements say is that regardless of how I may align with everyone in those rooms on any given issue, um, what they do see is someone who is engaged and with them in good faith and is willing to represent their views at the table authentically. And that is something that I I am very proud of. And that's something that I hope to do for for a much wider breadth of constituencies than just, you know, the Democratic Party in the chamber. We, we're a city that is going on a hundred ninety, two hundred thousand people. And being able to support all those folks looks a lot different than a city that runs on the back of the Saturday market. I am really excited to be a part of a city council and bring uh what I consider to be a decisive, focused voice to city council to move forward with solutions that do have broad community support and move forward with those uh in to implementation and uh and not be distracted by other things that sometimes come to city council. That's my vision for Eugene. I think it is a more shared vision than we think. I think there are a great many things in this community that we uh agree on more than we disagree on. Uh, I have, in my experience with the business community, local business owners who choose to take part and be active in the Eugene Chamber specifically, tend to be very community-oriented folks. And I think that that's something that's really special about Eugene. And I think that's a story that doesn't always get told very well. I think there's a perception that business owners fit a certain mold that I just have not seen borne out here in Eugene. So I really do, um, among a great many other constituencies, I really look forward to representing um the business community as well in that really authentic and decisive way.
As long-serving chair of Jefferson Westside Neighbors, I've been at ground zero of the challenges and impact Ward One. I've uh ran and participated in hundreds of meetings, talked with hundreds of my neighbors, engaged with our small businesses. And really feel like I've got a gr- a really good grasp of where people are at on the ground. I'm running to represent the residents and the businesses of Ward One. That is first for me, always. I think that my experience is what has attracted the people that have decided to support me. Um, I consider to be what I would call the pro-business half of city council. Uh, Randy Clark, or rather, Randy Groves, Mike Clark, Greg Evans, and then Emily. George Brown, who's also a former counselor and downtown business owner, has supported me. Gary Rayner, the late, great Dallas Boggs, um, a selection of unions and small businesses and a overwhelming number of engaged citizens that are involved in our Neighborhood Association, um, climate, infrastructure. I just think that my experience has put me in a unique position to be able to see that there are no clear lines between business interests and gov- uh, city interests and neighborhood interests and can bring those together because that is what I've been doing on the ground, working across uh, city and county government, nonprofits, homeless service providers and uh neighbors in order to forge actual solutions and accomplishing real tangible um wins for our neighborhood. And I think I can bring that to city council toward one and to Eugene broadly. Thank you.
Okay, great. Well, thanks, everybody, for being here today. This will be, this recording, we've we've recorded today's meeting, fortunately. And we're going to be putting it up on our website uh once we parse it down a little bit, but um I want to remind everybody that next week, we're going to have the I want to remind everybody that next week, we're going to have the mayor candidates here, the mayoral candidates, and then the following week, we have Ward Two, and so we kind of have a similar format and encourage participation, and we'll figure out what's happening with a Zoom online. We're also putting out a voter's guide, so some of you might have been familiar with the guide that we did last few elections. But it's going to be a chamber-specific voter's guide, and then it will allow us to, to kind of showcase all of the candidates, all of these Ward One candidates have participated. And so we asked them some great questions, and you'll be able to see their answers. And as you all know, we've been, they've been all engaged in a process to kind of align, assess their alignment with business values and priorities. And so each candidate has been scored, so all of those will be included. And hopefully you will see it as a good tool when you're going out and voting. Talk to your friends, talk to your neighbors, folks like, that are particularly, especially those that live in Ward One. So I want to thank the candidates very much. Thank you for being here early, and thank you for all your thoughtful answers and engagement with the business community. And we look forward to hearing more from you. So thank you.
And we all have literature.